All this meeting of order, please stand for the budget changes.
My allegiance to the fight of United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Take your seats, please. Uh, there was an executive meeting held prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personnel with possible litigation. Uh, roll call, please.
Rocheus.
Here.
Reitner.
Here.
No, say.
Barnhart. Martino. Martina. I'm sorry. Ister.
Alright, uh, I have two additions to the agenda. One is an extension for the Habitat for Humanity project on Line Street. The other is for the Summer Kickoff Entertainment Contract. Do I have a second to add those to the agenda? Reitner.
Yes.
Ister. Martina.
Yes.
Rocheus.
Yes. Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Any public comment on agenda items at this time? Alright, uh, moving on, uh, suite committee members for the yearly appointments. I have Kurt Kolovich, Don Roush, Joe Judy, and Jane Teague. Do I have a second to have those members continue to be on the suite committee? Reitner.
Yes.
Ister. Martina.
Yes.
Rocheus.
Yes. Uh, moving on to whole business here, uh, police vehicle update. So Chief, please don't, if I miss anything, uh, since we're beginning of this year in January, we got rid of the Tahoe. And now we're in the process of getting other vehicles replaced that, which is a Dodge Charger. Chief, I don't, I forget where it's out of, you know, you've dealt with that.
It's, it works a little bit, just outside of that.
Alright, so that's where we're getting the Dodge Charger. I just want, I know there are questions on that. I might leave a memo that that vehicle wasn't getting replaced. So that's what's going on, the vehicle that's getting replaced with. Are there any questions upon that?
I think we should buy a Ford.
Well, don't hold out, we're gonna wait till later in the year. Hopefully the rebates come back, so we can get a Ford also. So, if you hear your councilman, Ister. Any other questions on the police vehicle update? Alright, uh, moving on, uh, the fee schedule. I know we talked about this last meeting, uh, code office with Mike Rhodes and John Barnhart. They got their fees up to what they need to be with the different changings of people's other fees. So now they'll be accurate in ours. The one thing, I spoke with the chief and Todd Harvey and Xavier in the front office about just increasing our online, uh, meter fee to cover the convenience fee. Went from, nobody was 50 cents when we were eating that convenience fee. Basically, we're losing money. We want to up that to a dollar fifty, so that convenience fee is covered when the person uses it. So therefore, we're not losing money. It's just, like I said, any bill that anyone pays online, there's a convenience fee. And we're just passing that on to the user, just like everyone else does. So are there any questions on the fee schedule? That, uh, was obviously proposed last weekend, not speaking of weekend last meeting, and/or the changes that myself or the code office had made?
We discussed this morning, getting with Jeff, all those other things to make sure.
They are accurate.
Yeah, there is some, in the system somewhere. And also, at the timeframe, we know October is it.
Yeah, so make me sure, do you have, try to look at that, make sure those fees are collected sooner rather than later. Alright, so I'll make the motion to accept the 2024 fee schedule. Do we have, do I have a second?
Martina.
Yes.
Rocheus.
Yes.
Reitner.
Yes.
Ister.
Alright. Yes, sir. We can do that. To be increased throughout the year, for the following year. Yeah, nope, we can get that, no problem. Alright, moving on to new business, uh, for the things that were added. Uh, extension request for Habitat for Humanity. Uh, Mr. Rhodes, you want to add anything other than obviously just asking for an extension?
Yeah, well, um, the whole of this, the in number all agreement between, uh, um, Drive and with, uh, Habitat for Humanity. Uh, once we hit that, once we get that recorded, then we can get it on the plan, and then we can get the plan finalized. So that's over with, the long day agreement between, uh, Drive and Habitat.
Alright, any questions on that? Alright, so I'll make the motion to accept the extension for Habitat to remain at the top of your line sheet. Do I have a second?
Reitner.
Yes.
Ister.
Martina.
Rocheus.
Yes. For the other additional, uh, the summary Summer Kickoff Entertainment Contract. Uh, this is for our main headlining van. Obviously, I can't announce it at this time. You can fill the contract this time and return to them. But Joel did review the contract, and he found no issue with the contract. Does anybody have any questions on that? Alright, so I'll make the motion to accept that contract. Do I have a second?
Reitner.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes. Uh, moving on, uh, accepting the resignation of Brandon Geisway, effective January 12th. Do I have a second?
Martina.
Rocheus.
Yes.
Reitner.
Yes.
Alright, uh, moving on, of hiring a police officer, Tobias Blank. Uh, Chief, I didn't know if you wanted to give a few words. Yes, sure.
Everybody, just, uh, so you guys are aware, uh, looking to hire, uh, Tobias Blank. Uh, Mr. Blank is a, uh, born and raised here in City of Somberg. Well, actually, outside of City of Somberg, he has a family next business, uh, Blank Funeral Homes, um, outside of there, so. And looking into Mr. Blank, uh, he recently graduated from the academy. Toby, stand up, uh, Mrs. Tobias Blank. Going through his academy, he recently is graduate, uh, in December of the academy for the actual twenty. He applied here with the Somberg, um, prior to him getting out of the academy. Through the process he's gone through, he's basically has satisfied all the needs that were needed for the WOPEC. Uh, he hired as a police officer, uh, through his background and everything that he did, uh, that he had to do for a police hire. Uh, he is definitely an incredible individual that we're lucky to have in the City of Somberg. So, uh, without.
For something to make it official. Alright, so I make the motion to hire Police Officer Tobias Blank. Do I have a second?
Reitner.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Rocheus.
Yes. Alright, now we'll make it official. If you guys would like to come up, you can, you don't have to say back to the mirror. Makes it easier for your camera view. Nice to meet you too. Hey, we'll come, we'll come over here, so we got more. Make sure you get this good. Alright, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I Tobias Blank.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Thou will support, obey, and defend.
Thou will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
I will enforce all the laws.
I will enforce all the laws.
Of the Commonwealth in Pennsylvania.
The Commonwealth in Pennsylvania.
And the ordinance and laws of the City of Somberg.
And the ordinance and laws of the City of Somberg.
I will discharge the duties of my office.
I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I do further swear.
I do further swear.
Thou uphold and obey.
Thou uphold and obey.
Enforce all the laws.
Enforce all the laws.
Without consideration of a person's race.
Without consideration of a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Disability.
Congratulations.
I'd just like to, uh, add also, with council, I'd like to say thank you, Councilman, for, uh, basically bringing on a police officer. Uh, without your guys moving impossible, so with that, I'll just, I'll call it all thank you very much. And we look forward to down the road, we'll be able to talk about that. Thanks.
Congratulations. Congratulations. And the best looking councilman, Councilman Barnhart isn't here tonight, but you'll introduce him. Meet him later on. Alright, so moving on, uh, Councilman Reitner.
Nice to meet you, Toby. Nice to meet you, Toby.
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. We dated that a couple of years ago. We're making us spend, uh, seventeen percent of our budget in reserve for emergency. Okay, now, what we're going to do, we have somewhere in reserve right now. And we found out that we can put that at interest to make money. So we're gonna put it at interest, it's, it's, it's over national with five percent. Not make that motion.
Martina.
Yes.
Rocheus.
Yes.
Reitner.
Yes.
Uh, Green Like Dog, Mr. Baxter.
Uh, Green Like Dog grant is up, uh, to apply for, uh, I've been talking to Steve. He indicated that we wanted to go for a, a grant to upgrade our power cables, uh, for battery backups and, um, generate a hookups, just in case we have any power out of there. Um, and that, that, um, project will be a little over seventy thousand dollars, um, in this goal, uh, or excuse me, in P W. Put in a twenty percent match up required, so I'm just hoping for a, um, a vote.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to go for that grant. Do we have a second?
Reitner.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Rocheus.
Yes. Councilwoman Martina.
I just want to make motion to rehire, um, Mark Williams for part time in the P W.
Second.
Reitner.
Yes.
Ister.
Martina.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Councilman Reitner, vouchers and invoices.
We have outstanding bills of one hundred twenty-eight thousand, three hundred eighty dollars and four cents in general fund. One thousand, three hundred fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents in liquid fuels. Five thousand, two hundred sixty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents in grants. And sixty-seven thousand, four hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy-two cents in payroll. Make motion, we take those bills.
Second.
Ister.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Rocheus.
Yes. Alright, moving on to discussion items. Um, I know in the past, I think it was over summer, uh, we had a forensic audit done. I like to have, now I like to have a citywide forensic audit done, just to look over our books, to make sure all the funds are accounted for, there's no indication that anything is missing, but we just, I was, would just like to have one of those council questions, but I'm part discussing, discussion, to make sure we're, all the protocol, the procedures are being followed. Everything's right where it needs to be. I mean, uh, does anyone, is anyone opposed to looking more into depth about finding a company, uh, with the proper term, as an accountant, to further look into a full-time forensic audit for our city? Alright, so that works. Any other questions or discussions? And I know the one question that they'll ask is, how far are we looking back? Can we go one year, two years, or just get a price range depending on the number of years? Price range and number of years? Alright, that was easy enough. Alright, uh, moving on to the R C track. And people have been asking when that R C track will be getting built. I know we did receive funds for it, I know, I think we'd have to find someone to build it now, correct, Councilman Ister?
Yeah, we're working, I think this quarter, I already talked to the contractor, whether he breaks or not.
Alright, and that's when it's up at near the O P G, the baseball field, correct? Alright, alright. Very good, any other questions on that one, anyone? Okay. Uh, moving on, citation payment at the police department. I know last meeting, we, uh, discussed about, uh, getting all the, uh, parking ordinance monies, meter money, whatever it may be, collected at the police department. Uh, the chief and I talked about how can we make that process better, so everything's being tracked. And the one thing that we came up with, we thought the best way to keep track of money is making sure everything is paid with a credit card or a debit card. That way, there's no exchange of cash. Everything is collected immediately, it goes right into our bank account. There's instant receipt for the person who sadly may have gotten a citation. I mean, is there anyone opposed to doing that? That way, it's, there, everything is tracked immediately, there's no needing to handle funds as in cash. Also, we talked about the capability of printing it right on the, for lack of terms, ticket saying, you know, we only accept, uh, no cash, debit or credit card only. Is anybody opposed to that? That we go to that process, and everything is instantly tracked and monitored?
Is there something down there now that they can use, or is that something we need to research to get down this, this station?
Chief?
Councilwoman, uh, I would address the, the fact with that is, there are companies out there that we can get through seal and stuff. It's just like a regular.
There's a lot, I just wanted to pass that down.
Yes, like, you don't have anything right now, I just thought, after speaking with Mayor, like, this would probably solve any of our issues with any money going down, because it's an immediate transaction. Makes the ticket, it has your receipt, it's done.
No, makes sense.
Yeah.
I wanted, I don't think we can require, I don't think we can require only that. I think we can require those payments or a bank check or money order. But not everybody qualifies to get a credit card or a debit card. Therefore, I don't think we can legally. If they have.
Well, they have bank, well, and nowadays, a lot of people online thinks that they're allowed to debit card payments.
Even the prepaid mastercard.
Well, the prepaid, alright, I'm going with that.
The checks aren't happening either, just like the case, somebody doesn't, because there really isn't much anymore that doesn't allow.
Well, you're saying you guys are not paying, probably all the remaining pay or payment, maybe better money?
Well, the problem is, we wanted to make it, the best way to track it, so there's no saying, for example, oh, I paid my ticket with cash, and there's no actual pre-own receipt. I mean, we can do that too, but how many people say, oh, I lost my receipt?
I, I get it, but, I mean, legal, I mean, cash is legal payment.
That is very true.
I'm just saying.
But you know, the, I mean, people are talking about this, but, you know, everything, like, everybody pay, I don't want to say everybody, excuse me. Mostly everyone has a debit card or credit card, pays things online nowadays. And you may find that small, one percent of person who only carries cash. But I'm willing to bet they have a debit card or credit card somewhere that they pay bills.
I would think it's an option, if they, if they have, is there, you can even go down to the treasurer and pay cash? I'm just saying, I have an option.
I mean.
There should be an option, that you can use legal enter cash, I mean, there's, there's.
I mean, Joel, we need to go. So what, to get something together with Joel, and make sure, we make sure everything we're doing is legal. But I said, the biggest issue, we want to go with that, so everything is tracked, and there's no doubt.
I think, the point you make, get my word, is that, if it weren't like the police station, the only way you could make it is with a debit card or credit card. You can't pay cash, it's just. If they, if they don't pay in cash, you have to.
Well, my couple went back to that thing we decided last week, it's all gonna be handled there. Because it went back to citations, we're getting voided at, at the treasurer's office, and things like that. Now that the whole thing.
Maybe there's a system that can have a cash option, that would say, hey, you know, it's a debit card, okay, maybe there's something that come in that will allow to interact with, and you press cash, and it'll give you a receipt for you.
Why can't we, why can't we just use a system, use now?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Well, that's what I'm saying, I would say, we just want to go solely with that process, so there's no shadow of a doubt. Like I said, it's one of those things, it'll be trial and error, we'll see how it turns, we'll see how it works. You know, nothing's ever foolproof right off the bat.
I'm saying, I don't want to have an option, I can't go down with treasurer.
Yeah.
So this, this kind of flies in the face of what we said, is the, uh, the, the system. Whenever we talk about, uh, the, the choice, the choice of people, especially if you use cash. So we change, uh, just, just online to, to use cash. Another argument is, where, I don't think we should say two things to the, to the situation. First, let's do a bit of cash, just in the past, so that, so that means the other, the, the, the.
I mean, like I said, we can do any way which council wants to go. I just want to alleviate all those questions that may come around. It's just like, boom, it's simple, and you know, the argument was with, uh, meters, oh, you know, there's a lot of older people. But like, those same older people buy things online, those same older people pay things online. And every other community's doing it in the area, it just seems like sometimes, everyone else can do it, but Somberg can't sometimes. So. Well, as I said, with something, yeah, it's one of those things, trial and error. If it works, great, if it doesn't work, alright, we tried something new and modern for once. So, Mr. Vol, I'll take discussion, because we're talking.
You don't accept money order.
I mean, like I said, it's gonna be one of those things, if, if that's what someone comes in with, they don't have any debit card, credit card, of course, we're going to accept that, but we're trying to go more towards the credit card, debit card, if that is an option that they have. Sir, did you have another question, Baxter, about?
Oh, you answered it.
Alright, sounds good. So like I said, it's something we can look into, and see how it goes. If it works, great, great, if it doesn't work, alright, it didn't work, at least we tried something new and modern for once, so, alright. Anyone, any other questions on that one? Oh.
Okay, up further ahead, you talked about having a convenience fee for credit cards, but now we're talking about sticking credit cards? Are we having a convenience fee on this credit card?
Yeah, it's the same thing, like, right now, if you go online and pay a citation, that fee is already built in, and it'll be the same exact thing. It's already in there already, that people pay. So like, anytime you pay anything credit card, there's a convenience fee on there, just sometimes it passed on to you, or sometimes it's business easy. It all depends.
But then, then you're forced to pay the fee.
Right, everybody pay, I mean, everyone pays a convenience fee now, anytime they use a credit card. Like, for example, I imagine a lot of you pay.
That's not true.
Does anyone pay a water bill here?
Yeah, like, you go to any restaurant.
There's a convenience.
Most local restaurants offer cash options, they reduce the price, they want to pay that convenience.
But any, like I said.
Most local restaurants have that available, and a lot of people are paying cash. Everybody's strapped, they don't want to pay the fees, they're paying the cash, trying to get ahead of them.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm just saying, I mean.
Yeah, it's one of those options, we'll see how it works out. I mean, if it works out, great, if it doesn't work out, at least, you know, we gotta try something new in this town, that one thing. It's maybe one of those things. Alright, any other questions on that one? Alright, so moving on, time off closure, Mr. Ox, I know you have some questions on it.
Well, I guess. And my concern about this is, you know, maybe Toby's such a pit, is that first, government doesn't support this. Close down, musical building, uh, for a smaller, but, probably is important.
No, 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 this was in the handbook that the council approved up two years ago. And, I'm, so it's in there, it was voted upon. So, only person may not have been voted upon was Councilwoman Martina, because I don't know, she may not have been here at the time, so I'm not sure. But this was voted upon, and, and it was in here, and every, any changes that were made in here, I don't know if this was the change or not, I don't remember. But it was all in here. Now, people did not read it thoroughly, I can't help that. But it says in here, on emergency procedures and paying all that stuff, when we close. But who makes those decisions? And I'm not saying me personally, it says, the mayor in here, that could be me, it could be someone else, three years from now. But I'm saying, if there is a policy that we voted upon, that we agreed, I almost said agreed upon, that we voted upon the fall. Now, if we don't, if we don't like the policy, we can happily sit down and rewrite the handbook that it was in. And I know Rick, a couple of years ago, you did some work with the handbook, I did some work with the handbook, and it's not just, ooh, a one-day process. I know you worked on it for months, I worked on it for months, and finally, where it came down to actually put it together, it was like, a whole week, making sure we didn't contradict each other here, so. If council wants to change it, we're happy to change it. So, okay, then who should, who do you suggest that we follow?
But where the city of Somberg, I have a decision on our own.
Okay, but who do you suggest that we follow?
Well, you can make a decision, this is a business, it's just a open circuit, and not shut down, because the school district is down.
Okay, so you think that there are gonna be a ton of people out there doing business when there's no one outside in the streets, or doing the best they can to be maintained from our street department? Do you think people would be coming to City Hall, trying to get permits to put a porch on, or something like that, or? Like, that's our, like, work, like.
So you're foreseeing the future?
No, I'm watching the weather report here, when they say they're calling for snow, and they're calling for ice. So who do you suggest that we follow, then? Or do you? Okay, how, so who do you suggest, so if you want to go in and change it, change it. Okay, then change it, because last year, we had the same argument, we had the same, and guess what? Nobody did nothing. And then, when I make the decision again, now everyone's up in arms again, but no one did nothing before. Okay, so forget about the safety reasons for our employees that don't have to deal with, who don't have any responsibility of removing snow. They're coming to remove their snow, they, there's plans set in place. I doubt if Steve says, alright, guys, we're gonna come in halfway through the snowstorm to start plowing.
Those, those are policies, they don't have essential passes.
It does not say anything about that.
So, I think that's a reason.
Okay, well, he can.
So, if you don't have essential, non-essential, it leaves, everybody's essential, or everybody's non-essential. So, uh, if, if the street crews come in, it's kind of hard to say that somebody in this building shouldn't be coming in.
So someone's just gonna, I'm not, I'm just, I'm gonna exaggerate here, for example. So you're gonna tell me someone in the code office, obviously, I know they have work to do, I know that, but say the front office, someone's gonna be coming in, paying permits, and wanna do something? Like, why risk the safety of those people coming in? But those people are coming in knowing they're removing disor, they're coming in before the snowstorm hits, there, there's plans in place.
But you have doctors, you have nurses.
I understand that, but also, at the same time, is it really worth it, what, the safety of our employees who don't have?
But the other people, nurses and doctors?
I'm not saying nurses and doctors, I'm talking about our, our personal employees.
If they're not doing their job, then these people can't get around.
I'm talking about the people in the offices, and I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about the people removing snow. Obviously, they have to come in.
Is this a paid day off?
According to our policy, it all.
No, then it shouldn't happen, because I don't get paid off from this.
Well, Steph, I'm not talking about your profession, I'm talking about the employees in our city. Like, that's what I'm referring to, but you know, we can change this.
Is it stay in emergency only, or are we talking about every snow day? What's, what's a, a storm? Two inches, three inches? Is it, is it emergency crisis, is it a?
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm concerned about the people of our, our, our city employees who, who don't have the responsibility to do anything with the removal of the snow. Those are the people I am referring to. The people who have duties that they need to pursue, obviously, yes, they need to come in. Now, once again, this is what's in here, if the council does not like it, they can change it. I'm not against changing it, but somebody actually has to step up and do it. We talked about doing lots of things here, but there's no follow-through, so if they don't like it, they can change it, it's okay. I'm just talking about what's in place right now. Yes, sir.
If, for my men, my men have to, and, and everybody else gets to sit at home, out there, and pay. Then my men should be, in time, so that they have people down to time, that people are sitting at home doing nothing while we're out fighting the storm.
You know, Steve, you make a good point.
I'm just saying, if we're gonna go down that, the hole here.
So I'm gonna play.
To be fair to all employees, my employees are out there working.
You're right.
In this storm, while the other employees are sitting at home collecting money. So then, to be fair to my employees, my employees should come today, or every day that your people sit at home.
Alright, now, here's my other question now. Yep, good point, and I agree with that. But what about, on the other hand, in our handbook, where it says, your guys can leave early on a half-day for a holiday, but parks and rec, they're still working, the police, they're still working, they don't get leave a half-day, what about this? I'm just using, I'm just, okay, park and rec, like, for example, they still have the rent to run, they still have the pool to run for the holidays. Those, I mean.
They were also working the other day too.
I understand that, but I'm saying, he's talking about the snow, I'm just talking about the other, the other, the other side of it as well. When they get to leave, I'm not saying I'm against any of what you're saying, I'm just saying the other side. We have to look at the whole picture, not just pick and choose when we want to do things. Has to be fair across the board for everything, not just the moment we don't, that we don't like.
This is all, they still need to be at work, okay? The only ones that aren't at work are the students and the teachers, and all that you guys. It's, it's not about the teachers, it's about the students, they're safe.
So who do you suggest that we follow? Because, do we?
We shouldn't follow anything.
So who make?
We shouldn't be closed.
I mean, we don't have to close anymore, that's fine, whether it's two inches of snow, or twenty-two inches of snow, we don't have to close anymore.
If, if, I suggest we, we can.
If, if, I suggest we, we, you know, the word emergency. Okay?
Careful when using the word emergency, because that can still, there's a...
Fair snow emergency is true. But, you know, at that point, then, then... Or, for the literal lead policy. And, okay? And separate the essential and non-essential employees. The code office gives the decision. Because if you have an issue about something that's going on, the first place you're gonna call is their office. As well as the chief clerk, or the city clerk, who is responsible for the whole city.
Well, I'm just gonna say this, Spade. He's supposed to be in charge of all the non-uniformed personnel, but sometimes, that isn't always the case, depending what department you're in. So we have to be careful with that.
I'm not gonna give you the minimal apologies.
Yes, but...
I'm saying the way it's supposed to be, okay?
So like I said...
That's the right how it's supposed to work, that's the way it's supposed to be.
We can more than happily sit down and discuss this and do it, and figure out a new thing, I have no issue with that.
The roads were not bad.
Were you out in them?
Yes.
Well, that's good, I'm glad you feel comfortable. Maybe some people don't feel comfortable in them.
No, not exactly, yeah.
Okay, well, it's gonna cost taxpayers a lot more, someone comes in and gets hurt, but that's okay, we're... Okay, bottom line is this, if we don't like it, we can sit down here in a meeting and figure out a new policy and create a new policy, no issue. Is everyone okay with that? Okay, then someone can take the initiative and they'll need to do that. Mr. Stusman, you got a comment?
Um, I've been working in this area for about forty-five years. Snow days, if you could make it in, you came into work.
Right.
If you didn't feel you could make it in, you didn't come into work. You also didn't get paid because you didn't come into work.
Yes, exactly right, absolutely.
If you let the employee make the decision, then they drove themselves there, or they decided to sit at home. It, it takes a lot of the decision away from you. Because, okay, I live down by where Subway Court voters, where their garage is. And on a snow day, I see the same guy later in the day going past my house. But it's still the same guy on a snow day. So they made the decision, staying a little bit longer, make sure roads are good, and then go to work. And as for who makes the decision? The last time I was told that I didn't have to come into work was when it was a snow emergency, I think it was ninety-six. In the state hall. So, who makes the decision? If none of your employees come in, I guess the office is closed. See what I mean?
Oh, I, I understand what you're saying, but...
I mean, it's simple, if they can't make it in, you can't open the office. It's not your fault. They decided they couldn't make it in. It's that simple, it really is.
There's, there is a problem, I mean, the county did not shut down towards the State Hall, that's insane.
Doesn't the county, would they have something like that for the workers?
They have little leaves, but they're not shut down.
I mean, that's why I meant, that whatever the proper term is. What was that one there? So, everyone, did you hear that one? Okay. Oh, wait, so clearly it's shut down. No, clearly... Alright, go ahead, thank you real quick, sir, that means definitely comparable, comparable, take discussion.
I know what, I don't know what happened here with what you guys decide or anything. I can tell, I, I manage a liquor store, I work with PLCV. And what we do is very simple. If you make it in, and we load, and send everybody home, you get paid. If you call in sick, you get paid. Okay, so, it's really simple, it's important, it's how you make sure how somebody gets paid or doesn't get paid.
That makes sense. I'm just saying, if this is our only concern in the city, I guess we're doing okay. Uh, Spade, you had, you had one more?
Uh, we, uh, we have a court clause, where we take extra dollars to sell the bills. None of you know who was billed up for it.
I mean, I'm not doing vouchers, are you talking about something different?
The credit card?
Yeah, no, I'm talking, they're all on the vouchers, right?
I, I think what you're saying, yeah.
So when you pay them, when you approve the bills to them, it says, at that counter, it doesn't say what was paid, okay, or what it was...
The total amount that was paid, it wasn't each, each...
Oh, it wasn't, it wasn't broken down, like, if I, for, if I bought a pack of pencils and a, and a state card, for example, okay?
My concern about this is that, you know, debit credit cards are a red flag in every business, because you don't know what to pay for. What I would propose to you is, is that you get a copy along with your invoices, two checks, that says what each of these accounts paid for. Okay? So you should know what you're voting for. What if something was paid through there that should have been come to the council for prior approval? You don't know that.
When do we get the, when do we have the monthly banks?
Spade, we already have a process.
Yeah, I mean, we have the credit card process.
We have, for every credit card purchase, we have to pause, we have, I'm just saying, we have to pull out a specific form. If it has any problems, we should fill it out, but that might not get put on the voucher yet, yeah. So it's not making it from the forms we're filling out in the field to getting onto the voucher. I don't know if that's something, you put it on the voucher.
Like, you know, when they come in, alright, scan them in, when the vouchers come out, they can send out...
Yeah, we, we break everything down in the, on the vouchers, as I did, every single person.
So that's what should happen.
Okay, so Rick, can you make that happen?
So... I still think the way to go would be to play it, because then we, then we, you know what being bought before, it was going to be more. But that's, that's gonna be for another...
Another day.
Well, when the bank, when, when we realize what, you know, what's going on with the bank.
Yeah.
See, part of this goes back to what I said a couple meetings ago, about the purchasing system. Some type of process where purchases are approved or requested, and someone decides to opt for this.
I mean, there is a procedure in place, like, X dollars, you can go out, if you need more dollars, and it goes to the, the department head, and if it's over this amount, it goes to council vote. But, yeah, I, I don't, like, I don't remember those numbers off the top of my head, but then it, is that at the end there?
That's it.
So, let me say here, so if it's under, under seventy-five, the employee will say it's, will say Steve, 'cause Steve's here, he can make it. If it may be, a purchase is up to five hundred, between five hundred and a thousand, then he's department supervisor, and then if it's a thousand dollars or more, it has to come to council. But then it also goes back to, you know, in our budget, we approve X number of dollars for every budget, every line item. I mean, at that point, you're approving a budget, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, I think that's the process. But it goes back to the same time, if we're not trusting the employees that are making these purchases, then we shouldn't, these employees shouldn't be working here then.
It specifically says in there, not only advise, but...
Yeah, but if... Yeah, you have to go. But you know, it goes back to, I'm, I'll just use Steve as an example, like, 'cause they're sitting there. If we don't trust Steve and Mike with the ability and the power to purchase items, then Steve and Mike shouldn't be working for us if we do not trust them. It goes back to, if we don't trust the people, then they shouldn't be there. But yes, I think you're right. I think the, 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 not the receipts, but the receipts or the forms should be in there, so we know what we're voting on. So, I mean, if, Rick, and you guys, you guys are working in the finance department, tell, have him direct Kathy or Penny, whoever sends it out, to put that in with the vouchers.
I could tell you, when I, I'm deciding, I would tell my council first before I, before I do my input, or, or people before, I do it.
Yeah, I know, and that's what the chief does with me, always sent, I have him send me an email, so I reply back, so if anyone questions him, show him the email, I, I gave him permission to do it, so... But I think you're right, I think the form has to come through the email trend.
Is there really one credit card? What, what I'm asking you is, one credit card company? So does everybody have, in a, one card, everybody has a card going through the same account?
Correct, yes.
Each department has one card, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's it. And it's all one, so it's one bank?
Correct.
Let's say Wells Fargo, for example.
Correct.
One account, okay?
Unless you're using a low card or something like that.
Okay, without that. Um, what, I guess what I'm saying is, why couldn't we simply, I go on all the time and check my debit...
Statement.
Statement online, why couldn't we just print it off? No, I'm saying, I think that would be the simplest thing, rather than...
That's why I asked, the time of the statements come out.
Well, the statements are gonna be online, but they're up to date in months.
And that was kind of in the bigger picture, why we said going, paying things more online, just have to click about one instantly, by the way, oh, I had to wait to get my statement every month.
Well, in point of view, I think somebody just prints us off, makes copies, and hands them out with this stuff, and...
The protesters can't show where you're at.
That's what I mean.
It should be a debit card, 'cause, you know, look, I had, you know, per, whenever it was purchased, amount, all that stuff.
So that means saving time and money and effort.
You could, and not save on paper, you could just download it to everybody, like, it could just be a download instead that...
Oh, absolutely.
We could do that instead of printing it all out, yeah.
Using that technology. Alright, so we can...
You do have to have, yeah, you'll have the access.
You have to get access to it.
Yeah. Alright, so we can try to get those statements digitally, so everybody can review them. Alright, moving on, Mr. Backer, AARP grant.
Um, the A, AARP grant is up again, um, in your packets. There's, uh, some big work that tells you, um, what is eligible as far as projects go, and then also what has been, um, approved in years past. Um, so, I just want you guys to, you know, think about it, um, of what you would like to possibly have as projects. Eighty-three percent of their grants have been under twenty thousand dollars. Uh, so, I, I mean, you can, we can apply up to fifty thousand, um, for really what we would be looking for is a flagship grant. Um, just because that's to do with public, public improvement, um, community resilience, economic empowerment, that really covers the end as far as, uh, of what our projects really base. Um, but if we apply for fifty thousand, if we are still not approved, I would guess that we'd probably be under the twenty thousand hovering. So, you really should, I'll say, make, actually, I think that could be, uh, really makes your biggest bank or a buck. And, uh, just from what I was looking at, as far as what has been approved in the past, um, it really obviously is, um, community centric in the sense of, it has to have, uh, in their determination, a good community impact.
I mean, this, I know it's more than fifty thousand, around twenty thousand, I think a good start would be at the OPG. I mean, I know that has been needing, I know Councilman Ice has been working very hard to get that up and running again, and to this fullest capacity. I think that'd be, you know, twenty thousand or fifty thousand would be a good start to try to get, you know, that playground up to full capacity again. That's just my thoughts.
Honestly, I really don't know, I have the type to, the, uh, um, uh, their point of contact. I, it's kinda hard to say, but normally, these types of grants are a little quicker than federal, than state, normally, but I, I can't guarantee this would be.
Anyone else? Maybe for a project, I mean, like I said, we don't know yet, but, project suggestion?
We, if this is, we have a little bit of time, we can bring this up next meeting, if we wanna discuss it again.
Yeah, we'll put it on, put it on agenda again for next, uh, we can discuss it again, so we can come up with. Alright, so, moving on, announcements. Uh, next city council meeting will be held here at City Hall on February twelfth at six fifteen. Uh, the electronic recycling event will be equal twentieth, from ten to twelve, up at the ice skating parking lot. The fresh recycling center will be closed for winter, and will be open that spring, and we will let the date, the people know the exact date for sure. Mr. Rhodes, I know you had another announcement.
Yep, I just, I just wanna make this, counsel, and to residents here, um, that the code office did very well on the last snow, the previous two snowstorms, on the sixteenth, which was Tuesday the sixteenth, uh, we went out and issued, uh, snow violation tickets on the eighteenth. We issued sixty-six tickets and seven citations. And, uh, last snowstorm, which happened on Friday the nineteenth, we were out today, and we issued fourteen tickets and three citations. So it's getting better, and the citizens are, they're quite lively, for this one given place.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Any other announcements, council?
Yeah, I'd like to make, make an announcement on a different note, uh, Linda Daley passed yesterday afternoon. Uh, she was a city employee here for a long, long time, and she was found, uh, in her home, yeah, on a lone's chair, is that correct?
Yes.
But, yeah, uh, she passed yesterday afternoon, seventy-five years old.
So condolences go out to her family members and friends, 'cause she said she was employed in the city for many years and did many great things for the city. Is there any, uh, public comment at this time, public comment at this time? I'll work my way around, please say your name, sir?
My name is Tyler Sider, uh, Joel, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Um, I'd like to take over, start hearing all the state park stuff, I said, I gave it to you, one, three, I don't know.
Sure, absolutely. Absolutely.
Um, two, the, the state park's still on, two weeks, you know, I know Jerry, which is huge to that, I think, so we're gonna be, we're responsible for that somehow, but she's not safe.
I probably not hear this beep, but...
Yeah, I mean, that's... Yeah, absolutely, anything you would help. Um, then two, just for, I guess, three now, would be, you know, the state of the state park, I'm gonna be here, never be enough, I, I, I'd love to even take a trip with you. Absolutely, yes.
If the lights are on, don't matter, okay, right? Yeah, absolutely. But, yeah, Joel, with the plus of the nonprofit, you're just in the state park, just...
Hey, listen, I'm, I'm full with you, in fact, I'm looking at my calendar.
Yeah.
Um, true now, the, Derek's like to be a part of this as well, because I've considered here, you can talk about possible grants and stuff, but just a minute.
Absolutely.
What's your availability Thursday morning? About to say nine, is that for Derek? Alright, Thursday nine downstairs, Derek's off, perfect, okay?
Thank you, I see your question.
Alright, appreciate it.
Any other public comment? Please say your name, sir?
Um, my name is Harry Francis. I, uh, I'm a little embarrassed, because it's been a while since I was here. But, uh, in July of twenty nineteen, I came and I brought up the subject, uh, that is still going on. Um, I live on the thirteen-hundred block of Market Street, and in order to come out of my, uh, driveway, I need to back out into Highland Avenue. And I mention that, because many times, when I back out on Highland Avenue, I feel like I won the lottery, if I get through safely. You can be, backing out there, look down, see absolutely nobody, all the way down past Greenbridge, by the time you back out, for me, it's about eight to ten feet till I back out of my street. And there are times when I'm thinking, man, that car's coming right in, and I back in. The speed limit is twenty-five, which obviously is being ignored. Truthfully, to make the turn onto Highland Avenue through Market Street, you should be using a brake turn signal. That's ignored. And, the other thing that's gonna happen here is, uh, in this part, I'm not particularly impressed with. There's going to be some issues due to confrontations. There's already been a few, and I can say that without any compunction of it being wrong or doubt, because I'm pretty much the one who started it. Uh, there have been some people who, when I come up that fast, and, no offense, men chief, 'cause you weren't here at that time. We have gone probably about five to seven miles an hour up the rest of the hill, to the stop sign. And I've stopped at that stop sign, and I've looked so far to the right, thinking, my God, maybe somebody's coming. And I have gotten to the point where I don't really care if I tick them off, but it's not safe anymore. And it's been four and a half years. There were white lines painted, which were supposed to be, I guess, like a speeding thing. The lines are faded, and I have never, in the four and a half years since I was done, seen any form of enforcement up there. Quite frankly, it's a health issue. Uh, somebody's gonna get hit up there, there's small children right next door to me, there's small children in the next block up. There's people pulling in and out all the time from driveways, pulling out from the side street on Twelfth Street. Uh, it's gotta be taken care of, and it's gotta be made a priority. But I, I mean, I'm not saying it to be a wise guy or anything like that, but I am six feet tall, and I'm about six foot four fed up with it, and it's getting, there's gonna... there's gonna be an issue with some people pulling, coming up the hill.
Yeah, sir, may I ask you a question? I'm not being.
You can ask all kinds of questions, I don't have to get anywhere until seven o'clock tomorrow morning.
Sounds good. Um, no. Obviously, you thought about this, do you have suggestions for us?
Enforcement, if you sit down, and you can't sit by, uh, by zimmy's.
That's why I asked, I want somebody to sit.
Yeah.
I'm familiar with the area, I don't know where they would sit.
Well, you know my son, Tyler.
Yeah.
And he's got a building down at the bottom of the hill.
Yep.
You can pull in that parking lot, sit there, you can see everybody coming up.
Travis, you fall in.
Yeah, I, I would, I'll actually take a look at that.
All right.
The other thing is, we'll ask Steve to paint some line, I know we've had some, he was actually looking into actually painting some lines here for us in the, in the future, so we'll put that on, so we'll put that on the list, and, uh, we also have some grants coming up, we can do some collective enforcement there as well.
But I'm telling you from the, if you, I don't know how far that is from the Green Bridge, sir, I'm, I'm not sure of that, I mean, I don't have the measurement of that. But I am telling you, they are on you, I mean, they're up in the middle of that, and I'm in the middle of the hill, I'm right up by, by Northern Coast Place.
True.
Okay? And I am telling you, from the Green Bridge to there, it could be done in about ten seconds.
I see. That's why I asked the question, so I wasn't tricked out of it.
Oh, no, 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 and I'm not trying to be smart, I mean, I'm in my house for thirty years, yeah.
I, I know.
I lived in that house for thirty years, my son owns the, the, the property, and, and, uh, he's planning on being there a long time. So, you know, but it's, it's dangerous right now, and there's a lot of small children in that, you know, in a block area there. I worry that it's, I mean, it's truly a health issue.
Well, I like the idea of parking in that parking lot, I think that'll help.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other?
He's my son, he won't mind. By the way, I wish to, uh, say, uh, your road career, great job. I do, that's a tough, uh, it's tough coming up that hill and everything, but I had no issues coming up, uh, either of the last two storms, so thank you. See, I'm not always gonna complain.
Any other public comment? Please say your name, ma'am?
Never bet. I just want to say that, you know, I know you want to give everybody this word, that, because it's, um, service, or it's the community service or whatever, because people work in the offices here, but as far as a taxpayer, I just feel like, a lot of us don't get that ability to just stay at home, because it's a snow day, or it's, uh, or the weather's difficult, you just, like, uh, Justin, I think it's a good idea. When you start thinking the way you're thinking, we're taking more responsibility for those employees than what we should be. It's up to them, they're independent people, they're independent payers, and if they like, want, let's know, and get paid, then they should go, and if they don't, if they think it's too difficult, then stay at home. But don't, I just feel like that's, you know, whenever you guys sit down and think about this together, that you think about what the taxpayers are thinking as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment? Please say your name, ma'am?
Uh, the Craver and the Crans, um, just want to point out, uh, when the minutes are being done for these meetings, um, and this occurred, Jeff, before you, um, I have some concerns, I sat and read through the minutes from the past three years, because I was researching things, and things that have taken a long time to, and still haven't come to light for years. So, my concern is that when I'm looking at the minutes from May eighth of twenty twenty-three, there is absolutely no public comment typed on there. And there were a lot of public comments at that meeting, okay? That's a concern, because the right to know, those right here include the names of all citizens who appear officially, and the subject of your testimony, okay? And there is video to review, that there were public comments during that meeting. So I encourage that the meeting minutes are correct, so can you forget, Jeff, during that class. So that is concerning to me. So, moving forward, I hope we can, uh, correct that. Are we still, um, are we a, still a member of the visitors' bureau of the city? Did you renew that? I know that was the four.
I believe we did, because I know Jeff and Robin either met with them, no, at the end of last, well, I guess twenty twenty-three. The end of twenty twenty-three, I don't remember what month, but they did have a, I don't know if it was a luncheon, a meeting, meet and greet, I don't know which one it was, but we did get invited to do it, and Jeff and Robin did attend.
Okay, so we're, we're members of that, so the reason why I'm asking that is, so like, we should be able to upload all the Subbury events onto the calendar for our committees, okay? So, um, and yeah, up command talks to you about that, because I might have any business I can remember. And then all you need to do is, like, you go on their website, and you just upload it, and it'll say, you know, whether it's a kickoff.
Whatever it may be.
Whatever it may be, whatever committee.
That fellow we met there, that, that Andrew.
Andrew.
He told us to call him.
Yeah. Yeah, and then, but I, yeah, and it's an easy thing, right on the website, it uploads, and then what happens is, all those, the, uh, city committees are going, are right out there on the visitors' bureau calendar, and then they, they, uh, they put that out, because they do like a, it's on a, it might be monthly, I get email every month, say, hey, this is what's going on.
Yeah, it's like a blast.
So that way, yeah, so that way, all of our stuff, our committees, will be out there, and that will get more back in front of us.
That's right.
So, 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 that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment? All right, hurry this meeting.